Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to get the meeting started. We're on the planning board meeting. We're gonna run through the agenda. On the agenda tonight, we have a pool of agenda and a pool of minutes. We have three different meetings we want to do. Public comment, and new applications, including stickman dialysis industries for site plan application and transition. Then, any application of the Orlando County Board of Superior project for request, request change subdivision phase. Then, we have continuing of proposed ordinance changes, review of proposed outfit road district on the route along the road. And, when is it? So, our last meeting, boy first up. I'll have two of all call.
Not again.
Jake Lowery, longer game.
Roger Moore.
And the last scout board minister. Will I connect him? Motion that we approve the agenda as per? Second. More favor? Opposed? No opposed. So, we're gonna run through the minutes we have, going all the way back to November 13th.
I don't know. Okay, so, Madi and... Oh, that not?
Okay, so, how about it?
Three. Two, you said.
Two? Or two. No, it's not a form with the twelve. So, left the table that one. Okay, Jamie just pointed out that there was another one, probably sidewalk. It's number first. Roger, Jamie, and Madi. You guys get your... I'll second that. On favor?
Yeah.
They're staying. Two abstains. Okay. Thank you. Then, move on to November 18th. That was a special meeting. And, President Dan, I guess, Jamie, Roger Moore, and John. Make a motion, we accept those in. Second?
Special meeting was that?
Public hearing, office fire station. Without seeing what kind of the extension of the...
Motion is second. We have discussion. All favor? Yeah. I'll do it then. Okay. Eighteen. Eighteen. Over the fire station. Quick. I mean, I just... Yeah. Okay. Bring favor to abstain. Finally, last meeting, December 11th. For all of us, looking at the... All of us here. Motion to that. When is ready? I, question accepted, written, selected. On favor? Opposed? No opposed? Okay. Good. So, now we'll move on to... Public comment, if there... If anybody has any items that we were hoping to have on the agenda? Okay, so, carrying that, we'll move on to the applications on the agenda. Start with stickman dialysis industries. We just received these to that... So, we have problems around that. Yeah, just let us know. We just had only a chance to glance at.
Comments?
Well, just... No, if you could just explain. No, yeah.
My name is Paul Gabble, I'm engineering for stickman dialysis. Gene Freymark and Paul Parch is here. Paul is the contractor. Gene's the applicant. Some of you remember, this is lot eight on the previous approved study. This is a tremendous study plan for Phil Sherman there. So, actually, the applicants wanted to develop lot eight. Back then, it was AC2 zone, high two zone, course changed to BI zone. Pretty much same setbacks as the work back in the traditional zone. It was a 15 foot forty consolidated 25 feet rear. So, setbacks kind of really changed. The boundary of the product changed. Second bike through the cul-de-sac, we have 151 feet of foundation in this particular lot. So, that hasn't changed much. During the phase of constructing this project, these were the days left that was required until a hydrant went and US rewind of the water supply, pipe pressure supply. So, that was done during the approval of the original settlement. So, now the applicants, they must note that lot. What is the deal, so, move right to the back, back, back? From the hydrants, what you're asking? From the hydrant approach to the building, the roof of the property? So, can we go through the application that is submitted for work? So, as far as the survey, of course, it's where the original study plan is straightened by a previous survey. So, that's recorded, and the study plan recorded. Again, the lot size is two by two acres. The zone requirement is one acre minimum. Not the lot coverage being this one is 70%. We have 10% lot coverage on these particular projects, so we're way under the lot coverage. As far as the traffic, and then it's already at Dallas Street, front cul-de-sac, we only have three quarters. So, you know, we certainly would ask for the traffic to come initially, and they would be required to support traffic. We have providing the free space to be required by the applicant, plus a space for a handicap. We do have four additional spaces that we just got the future in case this business wants to take off or any of the applicants decide to sell the project. There's some additional pocket there for the new owner, leave a little pocket for the lease. But we're not saying we're moving three, but quite a few will be in the gap. As far as the drainage, it's like that this whole part of the year, we rolled back in 2003. And actually, was a school more intention point still. I think I should have had this written. Here, for the entire seven lots, that was approved by D.P. Got in 2003. That was approved, approved with certain specifications that we need to bring calculations. We have so many square meters previous there, it designated four lot. Lot eight is designated 20, so then the square meters in previous area. Work proposal, 10,000, okay, 9,000, I think I have... So, we have a proposal, 9,760 square meters over under half of what was approved for the school more than a million. So, we believe that should be the straightforward. As far as lighting, hair show, lighting, it's basically three points, the roof is, I mean, secure your lights, no lights running in the front, of course, should be getting people passing the lights during the night time, so they won't really affect the project. And one hundred wall, two wall pack, just lighting up the parking areas and door, over the entrance. We have two hundred watt lights, entry lights going to be doing so. We don't really mind with the issue, start a little bit of this project, so we get to make some touchings for lights and hopefully we're able to wait for the evaluation diagram for the project. That is pretty serious agreement. Pretty serious agreement, basically, going from the inner first system that I was concerned with, not showing, have to show a thing. The owner, the party, Peter and the Morris, want a passive recreational access, even if it was defined as, you know, personal pedestrian right away, aluminum courses, hunting, another passive recreational use. So, they will be defined that you have access over the existing travel way, and this access will continue on the existing driveway, which is... So, that's from the public. But if you could assume going here with a four wheel possibly, and or people's probably driving, and so, for passive recreational use and hunting.
What is passive recreational?
I think walk, do you like? Walking?
I mean, non-motorized?
That's what I thought. So, I did say maybe a rolling four wheel, and I think that might go with the applicant, but I think active would mean non-motorized.
I think we probably need to clarify.
I certainly will. So, it does say personal protection, standing, and I believe it's all non-motorized. But will he be going on a four wheel? I don't know, that's one very high now. Right now, my thought to you is just walk.
I don't know if it matters to us anyways, but...
Well, as a point of clarity, because...
It's gonna be on you, I guess.
The next thing is to be slow deals, and there are the else of four wheelers, and what, if that's why we're...
It's a point of clarity.
Yeah, and so, personal, but Gene or Paul might do that.
We can clarify that more. In the actual document that Gene has with Peter, it actually says pedestrian traffic only. Or walking, so he can go hunting on his own property.
Yeah. Why I'm saying that, it has also two. If it's open, other people don't know how to stay out of somewhere else, and they'll just think it's a free range.
Right, right.
And then he composed it, no slow wheel, no ATBs, or anything else. So, I did know he composed pedestrian right away, too. So, yeah.
The applicant, I did see a cost breakdown for the project. I did inform the applicant that he needs to break that down further, especially the cost pool. So, the library has broken down, we have a little cost estimate, and what I think we'll be looking for for bonding, not so much the building and stuff. So, I may have other comments, but right now, I can certainly turn it in the next meeting. The total cost for the project, $62,000, and of course, that's not quite there, and that's fairly rubbing landscaping, still, you know, landscape, meaning lights, etc. So, that's right now, that's the $2,885 for the site improvements.
The board get that, that's $62,000?
Six dollars. I can't hear you.
So, the total was $62,885 for the site improvements.
That doesn't include building or paper?
Correct.
Doesn't include paper?
Well, that's what the paper, yes.
Doesn't include anything?
Yeah.
So, there is no signs proposed in this project, so not proposing signs. I do have a note in the plan that those signs shall be a reference for a lot prior, prior to attain any terms. So, in the future, if for some reason or other, the site's one sign, they'll certainly have to come back and apply for a sign. Right now, we're not proposing signs for the project. We're not proposing a dump, so there is a letter in the package saying that, basically, they have such little ways, they have the hall up to here, and the transfer station and points and... So, and they kind of give you an idea of how much waste that was, but very little waste. So, we're not proposing dumps for the project. As far as fire protection, I say we have a hiding, we've got things called twelve inch project, parking, we require one space per employee, we have three employees, so we're providing three parking spaces, plus three, and that landscaping, we did a little landscaping in front of the building, it's basically hollow bodies, a building, we opened an upper by Mr. Boling Dog, so it's still a good state of view, so we are doing some landscaping, trying to find anything, landscaping, you know, the way the property, best that we can. We are proposing gravel drive. The warrant says that there are more than 15 vehicles, you have to pave it, we have three, so we are gonna do a paved entrance, and then we are gonna pave the parking area itself, you have to park it. As far as the minutes, we can make a lot of this time. Utilities, one of our utilities, we suggest a power pole, one of our utilities for the building. Water, we have to remove the wellness location, we can drill well, find water, also, I got a disposal area, we're just trying to second tank and gravity, and that down for the twelve years, so... That's the problem in a nutshell, unless you have any question? We have.
The distance from the cul-de-sac to the back of the building is however, because this is actually set to the rear of the property. Right? Is the building actually gonna be visible? Because as I remember looking at the property up there, it's fairly still fairly wooded and everything. So, I mean, is it like, building, you know, building the building in the blind, so you can't actually really see it, I mean, from the cul-de-sac down?
I believe you're not really gonna see either tree line, new tree line.
That's what I'm saying.
This is a ledge section where you get pretty good, the ledge section goes from 138 to 144, which is kind of like this, too, this building, the building. So, if they're coming around here, I don't think you're gonna see, you might flip a corner of that building.
That's why I was wondering, I mean, I didn't want to be seeing it in landscape, but we have to see it from the road either.
The well being may be something that...
I just asked a question.
The only landscaping that's required in the BI district in this area is along the birds of the district, where you have parking. So, I mean, 25 foot, either landscaping or uncut rough, with the boundary line and the parking, that's what we have.
Well, he does it in the back, and that's one thing that we have to discuss, for the reasons is, of course, it also happens to have a septic back there, most of the tanks there, and then the tank from down to the deep box. They'll line long line down to the deep box, and then into the field. See, that also the HHC, so the only place where we have that issue is right here. This is only the line, right here, that's it. Potentially here, that's 40 foot there.
So, that's 25.
That'll rub, it'll be okay. And when they, when they actually build this, 30 feet, they're part of that corner. So, yeah. But, in fact, is the only place where we have that potential, right here, with septic is, that's what we are, we are looking at.
You do your sidewalk.
Now, if they're gonna call for 25 foot of landscaping, property, if you're owning a residential bond, State Road is... K72, the ordinance?
Yeah. If I'm wrong, I'll be happy to add some more. All parking areas, it's 6-2, beat to, all parking areas, driveways, and other areas still 15 or more lots. That's the, that's the 15, um, trip area, should be 15. Uh, let's see. That's 7-6, C3C, all parking lots. Play order. In the BI district, the landscape areas, and this is prefaced by saying, all parking lots shall be landscaped along property boundaries, shrubbery trees, and other landscape materials. This landscape area shall be minimum 15 feet wide, except in the HC, CCS, and BI districts. In the BI district, jump down, says, "In the BI district, the landscape area shall be 25." Where the lot is watered, the existing vegetation shall be maintained in this landscape area. Large parking lot shall provide the 2-inch, 3-inch shade tree. So, basically, it's, it's a situation where we have a critical one that's supporting the property on 45 feet.
So, yeah, we're looking at this dash line, 25 foot, that back, so much parking, probably 30 feet from the property line. So, you know, we're gonna maintain as many trees as we can, this area's gonna be low and seed, obviously. I know in the past, you know, landscaping board has said, you know, bone and seed is landscaping, certainly not just vegetated. I really, you know, I certainly can, if we, if we can, if we really want to, we could plant a little bit, somebody wanted a five inch. I mean, we'd rather not, I mean, we're running near BI zone, and we want to do some stove found, obviously, those leaves taken away. I don't even wanna plant a lot, I got my tank, my tank really should go where it is, tank already caused a problem with the setbacks. I don't really wanna put it, you know, under the hidden area, hidden area. So, I kind of think that really fit the side, that's probably where it should go, but this I'm glad to take the thought on.
Wait till sidewalk, check it out. Sure. Do you, do you chair? Do you, do you tell us exactly the different products you produce, just in short?
I make accessories that kidney dialysis patients use. A particular type of kidney dialysis patient that has a tube coming out of their belly, we make a belt that goes around their waist to hold that tube in place. So, just sewing machines that sew on on one side. And they also, that type of patient uses a bag of solution that looks like an IV bag, only bigger. And we make little carrying cases that keep the solution warm, so that they can be used comfortably.
So, there's no adhesives, there's no, the choice material is basically fabric?
Fabric thread, yeah. There's no...
Gentle to the skin.
Gentle to the skin, that's correct. Here's our catalog if you're... Read them under, please.
Do you want that? No.
Very good. Um, right now, we're renting just up the road at, next to Enterprise Car Rental, there's like a matching, a building there, we're downstairs, we've been there for four years. We moved our business from Canada four years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Before you ever say any concerns with what the project... So, this, this catalog, just, you don't put any oil in these, right?
No, we make the belts, and we make the small warmer that you see in there. There's no plastics molding or anything like that.
So, no tech, no, no noise, odors?
No, there's an air compressor, smaller than that, nothing like that. Really straightforward.
If you were to expand the operation, would you most likely, you would expand the buildings as well?
That's a good question.
And the, and the context of that question is, because, you're saying everything, you not have the dumpster, you're not doing enough of these things, because of the proposed conditions right now, they could very well change if you're successful.
This building allows for expansion, about 25% bigger than we are now.
You could expand internally in the footprint of the building.
Yeah, that's correct. And the product line is likely to remain the same.
Okay.
In the site, by example, location, we put a dumpster, so some areas, dumpster with the... Whereas, I had a dumpster right here.
Oh, yeah, I'm not worried about you guys having enough room on the site.
No, no, I mean, it was right here, it's a dog, and you put a new dumpster.
As far as potential expansion, they're probably the septic, I think. Are you a big engineer?
Yeah, there's not many showers, you know, so it's based on new amount of flows. So, you know, I can't imagine that it's just gonna be very, it's probably with the six people or something, so.
Paul, how would you, how would you characterize the soils out there, Lee?
Um, it's ledge, of course.
It's a shell, that shell, head rock.
I think we're waiting for the sidewalk, it's pretty warm.
Yeah, it's shallow, the head rock probably, I think, so it has to be, 24 inch, the bedrock or something, yeah.
Sliding very slowly.
Shallow, right.
So, far as, pretty, it's pretty uniform, there's pockets and gravel in some places, but otherwise, that's why I put it in the court, I don't think we need a high intensity soil, so, because we've found one location. It's already, it's already approved lot. Yes, so that's number one. And number two, the HNG 200, we've already found the location we can. Technically, we're supposed to do that. So, we put it around the wave before. All right, so, fine. Well, now that I've got the, the cost, that's the last thing we're... You guys are gonna have to make decisions in waivers, and also the, of course, sidewalk. Wait, when we, you know, we're getting lawyers, it's like...
We need to see it first.
Okay. We're working out, we're doing, then we'll do the sidewalk. Yeah, I can make a motion before we deem the application complete.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, and discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, good. So, now, what about a sidewalk? Has been before, it's still bad.
Yes, I don't know, it might have to be...
You available? On the side of that, you guys?
I'm not, I'm...
Have a test.
This, I have a...
All right, so...
And what is the next one?
What?
Weather.
Weather, yeah. We all know.
First of all.
Well, I'll pick it up.
He has the policy too.
Yeah, we're not supposed to see a week. Week from Saturday?
Yeah. We're doing 17.
Probably warmer than today.
I'd like that.
We're going out there.
Sorry, warm now. He's like the sidewalk we had last year for the... Yeah. All right, so, what time would be good?
Nine o'clock?
Yeah. Make it close ten?
Let's go to nine thirty.
Jamie, be there at six.
I'd rather be earlier.
It doesn't matter time-wise, if I can make it, I can make it.
I can make it, I have a good night of chances.
Nine thirty.
All right, okay. Like nine o'clock?
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty, is that?
You want, you want to go back to that?
There's one, there's one. Okay, nine thirty. Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Nine thirty, and we can meet here right there. What would be helpful, if you could just take now, sort of, if you all get it?
Flavering, kind of already existing, we don't mistake out.
We would have to drive down the park?
Yeah, you can drive in there.
I, no, I haven't been up in a while, but like, we usually, it's all ledge, so you need a crawler to go through there. It's looking pretty good.
Okay, so, we'll see you in a week and a half. Thanks very much. Seventeen? Seventeen? All right, so, we'll next move on to the Orlando County Board of Superior projects. Yes, right next. Next, okay. Thanks, no, I got it. So, I might get all this.
I don't know.
This is a, of course, the Walter, food, basic plan.
This is a, a, of course, the Walter, food, basic plan. Oh, good, good, good. If you remember, we divided it into this. Let's go this way.
Thank you, Joe, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Look there, the flower lot. I can't hear.
I, I can't control that one from here. Control this, you can control that. That's running.
We can all move in essentially.
Good.
Good.
That's your baby. I'm a sport right.
So the mini splits are, this is essential.
Yeah, we did, yeah. We're here for you.
Okay, so, open up to the applicants, um, welcome back.
Thank you. I'm gonna get to you all.
So, uh, Rick, you, you be, uh...
So I'll give a little introduction.
Yeah.
Listen, now, we, we just, right, we haven't had a chance to review it yet, sort of.
Well, because, well, we, we made decisions this afternoon, that's what, it's happening. So.
We're asking this. I'm Rick Light, Light Environmental Design, and Joe Paulini is here tonight along with Phil Grundin to help answer questions. And the purpose, we thank you for, for hearing us, the purpose of being here tonight is essentially to talk about performance guarantee. We've been working with staff, with TAD, um, with Todd on, on the basic work addresses. Assurance is just gonna be required for the project, and what format. And through discussions with TAD, and looking at the vehicles that are, I think we talked about this with the board, that are available. We were looking at the tri-party agreement form of assurance for the project, and phased approach. And you recall that under the current approvals, what we talked about in our last meeting, the project, the five phases, the red phase, which is phase one, and we internally break it into phase one A, which is units one through eleven. And fa, and phase one B, which is twelve through thirty-one, and the community center, which is right here. And unfortunately, subject, this is phase one. What we're calling phase two would be the green phase, which is units, uh, is phase one, is thirty-two, thirty-two through sixty-three. Thirty-two to sixty-three, I believe thirty-two units. And, and then we're, we're just doing the commercial, we're doing some clearing of the commercial, I play TAD site with the contractor. So in terms of the guarantees, what we wanted to clarify was the process, we're going to the TAD on the process for how that works in the format. And one of the things, one of the rubs was, what's, what level bonding, we talked about this in the last meeting. And if you look at the project, these two phases alone are about five and a half million dollars of site work. And to bond, to a direct one-to-one bond for five and a half million dollars of site work could be, could be extremely prohibitive. And we were discussing, the purpose of a bond on a private project, although it's a partnership with the town, it's a tip, it's really to protect the interest of the town, the interest of the developer, should things go awry, should. For some reason, the economy goes south, the product goes belly up, what is the, what's the risk to the town? The town would be, what does it cost not to come in and complete the project? The town would, this, really, this private project, we'd be committed to complete it, but to stabilize it, make it so presentable, and then the banks would take it over, and they would be the ones that could sell it to somebody else, market and move it on. As opposed to a public street, typically a bond, it might be a hundred percent bond for a public improvement because the town has more interest. You've got people who might already moved into a street and that sort of thing. And so we were looking at what would be an appropriate level of bonding. And in our last meeting, I guess we wanted to clarify, well, the approach Joe Light can take, and we think makes a lot of sense, and Phil's heard him ask questions about it, is to work on the basis of a, I'll explain this graph in a minute, of a, under the tri-party agreement, is to have a, a, a performance guarantee for, based on the phasing, of a ninety-day window. There's a rolling, a rolling guarantee, and I'll explain what this is about. The ninety-day guarantee basically takes, since, if you imagine, this is a conceptual, I don't think that's a, say, the turn it's, or illustrating. If this, uh, is a three-month period, the first ninety days of the project, phase one A. This is the second, just say it was one year's construction, it may, it may not be, let's just say for sake of argument, phase one A was three periods of ninety days, this is, I think, a year, nine, nine months. So the first three months, contractor provides an estimate to the town, to us, of that level of work. The total for phase one A is one and a half million dollars, one point five four million, it's there. The first, rather than bonding the one point five million dollars or having a surety on the one point five million dollars, the idea is to take a, a window of ninety days, fund that ninety days, which is, can we say this, there's an amount of about two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars, which has been estimated for the first ninety days. Using this as a bar graph, that would represent two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. Let's say the first requisition, they take out eighty-six thousand dollars, you're left with a hundred sixty-three thousand dollars. The second requisition, which would be month two, let's just say there was a hundred seventeen thousand, a hundred twelve thousand dollars of work that was completed. It reviewed by the town's engineer, reviewed by the representative, the, uh, our firm, the agent, so that the owner can agree upon. And then the balance of that amount is, is fifty-six thousand dollars. The tri-party agreement, they've agreed that when they get to day seventy-five, Grundin doesn't look ahead for the next period, the next three-month period. And let's say the next three-month period, they estimate seven hundred thousand dollars. They fund that seven hundred thousand dollar kitty on day seventy-five while still within phase one. Now your total balance in the kitty is now seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The last payment, the last requisition on, uh, the last requisition on, uh, the third month, there's only fifty thousand dollars left, you've still got seven hundred thousand dollars in the kitty, starting into phase two. The, the purpose is, it's sort of a rolling performance guarantee that moves ahead of us, and it never drops, it's never, the bank is never empty, and you're drawing it down based on the amount of work that's done in that period. And what we're trying to ask for approval on is, is this sort of a format, and this would go to phase two? You're, you're funded phase two, first period, say you draw down a hundred eighty thousand, you're left with five hundred and twenty thousand. Say the second period, the invoice is for two hundred and thirty-five thousand, you're still left with two hundred eighty-nine thousand. Seventy-five days into phase two, you fund phase three, you get the idea, you're five hundred thousand dollars left in the contract, you're back appearing. So you can see how that, there's always money in the kitty, and the case being, we discussed today, what if you're at the end of one of the periods, and project goes bust, what is the cost to stabilize the site? At that point, the town's engineer looks at the site and says, it would take, it would take about fifty thousand dollars to complete the site and stabilize it. There's not fifty thousand dollars in the account, they fund the account for the difference, or whatever that would be, to stabilize the site. So it's a very safe process, there was always money capitalizing the, the performance guarantee on basically a three-month lookout. And again, the reason for this is so that we're, the applicant has had to put out an atrocious amount of money for a long-term project on multiple phases. If you look at the project, it, what, the whole project costs fifteen million dollars, one figure, plus, you know, we're doing this on a phase basis and then breaking that phase down further. So if, if you said now with TAD, one of the things that we would, um, I think TAD has a format, we talked about the format for requisitions. Sort of getting into the weeds here, what's this ready conversation? Is that, there, you know, basically, there's a format of, of items that have been identified in a, a requisition form, which is the basic form, and release form, and each month, that is signed off on by the town's agent, their engineer, us, TAD. And so that money is all done in the bank escrow, these five banks, so there's an assurance and a transparency process because obviously the town has an interest on the fact that if it's a partnership with you, it would be difficult. The public can be assured that the work is completed, there's checks and balances, and the public can, and the planning board and the town can rest assured there are guarantees to meet the requirements of the performance guarantee, should something go awry, to stabilize the site. So I guess we're asking for the boards, in terms of that process, Joe, consider, may I? Joe Paulini?
Joe, could you go forward, hold it, say, you can hear.
Okay.
We can't hear. We know you can talk.
One of the key elements is the bank. The bank is a party to disagreement, so whenever we put money in, the bank has the money. In this case, it's United Peoples, here in Kenny Bunk. That bank cannot release the funds, it will be against the law, to release any funds unless through TAD, which would be the town manager signs off. Rick and I can sign off, but without the town manager's signature, that bank cannot release any funds. So therefore, for example, RJ Grundin wouldn't get paid. So RJ Grundin wants to make sure that when they come in with a request for payment, that particular dollar value, as the work relates to it, has to be completed, otherwise they can't get paid. So there's where your security is, if you're looking for security, because the bank cannot release the funds. So there'll always be funds in the account to take care of the stabilization or anything else. God forbid they say that TAD or your town consultant says, gee, you did this work, you got twenty thousand left. However, I think if we were to stabilize it, please, we'd give five. Well, then, if we need to put another fifteen grand in, we won't put it in. That's fine, it's just so that we won't tie up millions of dollars while we're doing some work, but not all of it. And there's another safety factor. Through D and P, I have to hire a third party, which I want to use Rick, but he, he says, no, it's a conflict of interest. But I, I said, well, who's gonna pay Mike Walsh?
Sure.
You are, Joe. I said, okay. But it's okay, Mike Walsh is on board, so he's also inspecting, so if we do, for example, if we open up a site, he's gonna know about it. And every week, or other week, TAD gets a report that says, you opened up this site, it is protected, and so on and so forth. So the town gets a report as to what area on the map that we're working on. So there's always that continuity where we go, what are you working on, what's the value, and the funds cannot be released unless through TAD, the town manager decides.
And to be clear, Ed, that the, the town, sure, you're all telling, you think you already know, but the public, the escrow account that the applicant pays for the consultants is a separate account from this, that's a completely separate account that is funded based on the estimated time that we're gonna have to ask for. And that is funded by the applicant, not by the, there's no taxpayer money in that at all.
May I introduce Phil Grundin, who's RJ Grundin's son, and ask him if he's comfortable with this procedure? Because they're the folks that have to get paid, if, if the work doesn't get done, excuse me, they don't get paid, and the bank won't release the funds.
No, um, the, yeah, Phil Grundin, RJ Grundin, son's more dealing. This is a process that we're, gives us a lot of comfort going into the project for a private developer. Uh, when you're working for a town or a state, you kind of know that they've already arranged for the bonding and funds in place. The private developer, this little work, trying to understand what's going on. With this, we don't put the monies in place, um, you know, work production with, with the town and everything. It gives us a lot of comfort knowing that, you know, we do our job, um, we're getting paid, um, we're definitely favored.
If there are any questions from the board that we can answer, or?
Well, first of all, it looks like you have a lot of checking balance, I think that's, that's, that's what we're looking for. Do we have, um, questions about, if, right now, it's nice and, you know, tight, and, and radical, but, but, what about the, the unknowns? If, if it wasn't, I think they go with plan, that the ninety days, uh, would not be a floating, ninety days, or if, if you start, and, and they try to?
Start, it's, it'll be established ninety days, basically, the requisitions are gonna be, there's gonna be a requisition review, I've, in staff, at TAD, we probably set up regular meetings, so before any requisition, typically requisitions are constructed on a particular date, established the first Tuesday of the month, or something like that. And then there are timeframes so that everyone can anticipate the week before, or whatever it is. Uh, TAD or TAD representative, town engineer, we, we walk the site, we go to the contractor, we agree through a process that, what they provided for a set of values. They said they did this amount of work in these categories, and we say, wait a minute, you don't even have sewer pipe on the site, is that fifty percent done? No, 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 you know, we, there's a shit, there's a way to look at that, that gets signed off on, and so that, that ninety-day period would be a consistent, I mean, that's a, a consistent, first Tuesday of the month, that deal. Then there's so many days between the requisition, and the, and the bank releases the funds, and the...
So for thirty days, we have an agreement that we pay a couple million thirty days.
So, um, I, I think it works, but from, from my point of view, it works for the time, but, um, might do some drift through it, uh, to, but you have to, you have to know ninety days ahead, what that next, that next work will be.
Exactly.
Like, for example, we're gonna be putting in one B, which is worth about two hundred fifty thousand, we're gonna be submitting that to TAD.
Yeah.
Next week, so that, that shows now, we're gonna be starting work on one B, you have to put money aside for the next ninety days with one B. So it only is in one A, but now it's one B, so all of a sudden, it could be in, and it's the same checking account, doesn't go to different checking accounts. It could be a million bucks in there, but within that ninety-day period, they could do ninety days, a million dollars worth of work. Uh, so, there's, there's always money in the accounts, never ones drop, you can't, because also, he won't let it. He just won't, because he won't say to, to your town manager, yeah, it's okay to approve it. And then you've got your town engineer consultant stepping in, because he looks at the requisitions, Rick looks at the requisitions. If I'm gonna pay a bill for work that's being done, if it's not done, I'm not gonna sign off.
Well, to release that, with, um, you, TAD, town manager, I'm here, you, uh...
The owner. Rick's gotta sign off.
You'll notice on the form, I gave you all a copy before, uh, basically, the first one that has a small amount of letter, you've got to draw down for it. You can see all the signatures on that form, on that page, or the second page. There's a whole bunch of people that have signed this, before the bank releases anything. And this is, if, you, you folks probably don't know this, but this is a tri-party agreement that, let's say, for instance, we've been using with Southern Marine. Same thing, only, and they're doing a phase project too. They put in the money for phase one, and they go to phase two, they put in the money for phase two. They're a much smaller project, much, much, much smaller, so, you know, the amount of money, it's gonna be about thirty thousand dollars if you're going once. So perhaps only five million dollars.
The, the major difference between this and what, what we had, um, discussed, was last time, was, it was gonna be phase by phase.
Full.
How, how you looking at just the?
Almost like some facing it, if you will?
Yeah.
Like a rolling, like a rolling guarantee, but to the chair, your question about what is, what are those numbers, what? We rely on Grundin on that seventy-fifth day, or, you know, approximately, they, you look forward, their estimator, from Grundin, says, okay, next, they've got, we have a long-term schedule, obviously, for construction stuff. I mean, internally, there's more than a ninety days schedule, they look at S schedule, they look at their values, and they come up with a number, and they say, okay, next ninety days, this is what we expect to do. It's, it's all kind of in the computer, here's what we expect, isn't it the exact same, so they say it's gonna be seven hundred and sixty-two thousand twelve cents? Yeah, it may be plus or minus, but that's where the process, as you're going through the process, and you find out that the value of the work, they can't requisition more than the value that we put into the, into the kitty for that period. So if they've done more work than that, either the kitty has, they have to agree to fund it, or they have to wait to build that for the next period, quality. So everyone, it's a, it's a, it's a process, where everyone comes to the table on that. And I just want to say, because that's the case, and to apologize in advance, we're probably gonna err on the side of caution of what we think we're gonna be able to do for that ninety days. Uh, the last thing we wanna do is to, eight hundred thousand dollars worth of work, it's only seven hundred thousand dollars.
But if it comes to me and say, look, Joe, you're putting seven hundred, and we're gonna do eight hundred, let's increase the kitty. Then we modify that window, go to TAD and say, it's no longer seven hundred, it's eight hundred. 700, it's 800, and here's the additional work that we're going to be doing to cover that. So then he has a whole menu to give to his consultant. So now he knows that we added some additional work, but it's covered by the fund because we've added to it.
It also takes care of change orders, which is a little special.
Exactly. Because the change orders would be included in our estimate for work in the next 90 days.
The bond does not, unless we put in a large contingency, 20% of something, we're not going to be able to cover that years later in normal bond processes.
Really, that seems like there'd be a little bit of extra work to do, Joe, and the town structure.
And that's why we have an engineer. As you know, we're required by subdivision law to, Joe's required to give us 3%, say, for a project, to cover inspections. But we don't need that, quite frankly. But we have, what we do is, while I'm working currently as the town engineer, with a, somebody that will be on-site at critical moments, keyboards, moving inspections. And so they'll be doing the fieldwork and reporting to me, and I'll be scoring reports to Rick, who's, you're basically the engineer for the project. So you're supervising it, the owner, I'm supervising it for the town. Walsh is doing observation for D and P. And we've got...
And then KKWW is doing it for the water.
They're doing their own inspections.
They have their own inspections.
And that will be a separate escrow account for the inspection for the water, so it's going to be on top of it.
Yes, the water's going to be off our plate. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot of, it seems to be a duplication, but I would say there's definite inspection in the year, the water.
Yeah, I have a question. It sounds great, it's a good way to utilize funds, but one of the things that this is meant for is assurance that if something happens, if something untoward happens, the project, as I say, is stabilized. My question is, what do we mean by stabilized? And how do we calculate it to make sure that we have money to stabilize at the end of that phase?
The chair, my answer to that is a good question, because between the town's engineer, we meet monthly, and they come up with an idea of what, for this particular area being open, stabilize it with the fluid following, you know, completion of certain pipe sections, the smolderage is half-done at this particular point, use the detention basin half-done, and then to stabilize that lomen seed, 40% of lomen seed over our areas. I think if we can leave it, the staff can come up with sort of a basis for establishing that. What does stabilizing mean, from the other understanding? It may have to be maybe a doctrine that we, well, stabilization shall include the following, that might be something that goes into the, or anything like that.
That would really concern me more than anything, was to make sure that if something goes wrong, and we have the funds available, that needs to be looked at. It looks like there will be, but who knows?
So we would rely on the engineers to look at that and collaborate and say, okay, at this point in the process, you're down here, and between here and the end of the month, you've got a detention basin half-done, here at the end of the month, you've got 1,000, the bank, you think you've got 75,000 bucks. If you had stabilized this today, so you, you know, minimum was 75, you need to recapitulate the cap.
I think probably, when you, when Grundin does the calculations, I know you've got all that worked out, do you have, you have a certain amount of work that needs to be done, but at the end of that, can you calculate or can you add to that, what stabilization is all?
Because I'm not the escrow, I couldn't give you exact figures, but because they do have, again, a day seventy-five, you have to funding that the next 90 days, that essentially gives you two weeks' worth of funds that they've done. I feel pretty comfortable that, you know, regardless of what conditions are, we'll be able to get this site, you know, tightened up in that two weeks.
The thing is, when you're at your low point, that thing still belly out. Is there enough left to take care of, that needs to be taken care of?
That's my concern. Yeah, I think so. And, you know, and we could certainly, I feel comfortable with you, we'll have enough in there.
No, we would be able to do. Here's the money, go stabilize the site.
Right. And then... I mean, to John's point, is it something that we consider a minimum amount that we would want to have in the account at all times to make sure that that never occurs?
And I think, and I would like to say that, yeah, I can say, let's put it at 50,000, but if you guys have a huge area open, 50,000 might not be enough.
I agree.
So I'd like to make it a rolling contingency as well, based on how much is open, how much is undone. I think it's something we're going to have to actually ask, I believe the engineers are going to have to follow that, you are, too. You have to let us know when we get this. And that's why we have those meetings, we have the drawdown meetings, which we sit down to...
That'll happen a day seventy-five.
That'll happen, that'll happen every...
Every 30 days. Every 30 days. Every month, every month.
We have a monthly meeting.
Sign off, every month, sign, you need to head it down and sign off. That's a pretty standard process.
May I?
Yes.
I can give an estimate of stabilization for Grundin. We can put that in, it's a separate line item, so you can see it, and then if your town engineer doesn't agree with it, we can discuss it. That's another separate line item. It shows a value that says, for these 90 days, God forbid, if we were to leave on day one or on day, this is the stabilization, when we leave one, okay? So we can show that to you folks, and then if it's acceptable, and that changes, that would change for every 90 days, for example. If we close one out, we open up another one, then we put a different value. Or if it's not closed out, we have to put additional money in and keep that line item funded until it's closed out.
For the chair, Mr. Paul, I think you have a good way to do that with the local staff on this, is after requisition meeting, the walkthrough is done, you do an estimate of, okay, after requisition, everything's signed, at this point in time, having just looked at the site, engineers, basically, rough idea of all part of what it would take to stabilize the site. So each requisition and drawdown, you make sure the drawdown, you've got that minimum amount, there's an extra that makes very, sinks through the process very quickly.
And it might be something as simple as, as you mentioned, detention basin, I think that's a more ideal. I don't want to just stabilize it. How much is it going to cost just to get that detention basin operational?
That's stormwater control.
You can't leave, it has to be completed.
So we can make it judicious, it's a lot of judgments in the field, and it's not, it's not rocket science where you're down to the dollar, but I think we can all, we've got the professional on-site, the contractor, you do a monthly walkthrough, and say, detention basin A is half-done, you'll have it done in two weeks, but requisition time, you know, just a couple of numbers that make sense in there. It's not, it's more than art than science, but a texture question.
I want to go back to, yeah, the burden of the town, four, five phases, and it takes some work to figure out each phase, but put the year before the next phase. Right now, you're going to, you're going every 30 days, spending, expecting...
I'll have some help.
Well, and you add in, you're addressing the town, so it's a burden on the time.
Well, the other burden, the applicant is paying for our, our people, our consultants, our engineers. And quite frankly, I, it was part of my job description, world view. Remember, this is a little different thing. Any other project that we've dealt, first of all, it's multi-year.
How long are we going to, how long of this job?
What, this project?
Yeah, completion on this...
Seven years, I hope. Maybe sooner on the infrastructure, selling units could be longer, but on the infrastructure?
Yeah.
Wouldn't it be fine?
Five, six years. Pretty, less.
We'd be fine. We've never had a project that's that big. That's number one. So it takes a little bit more, it's a, it's a little more difficult to use the performance assurances that we're used to use. The second thing is, we're partners, we're a player, so we have a touch of this. So in a sense, we're partners, so as partners, we want to make sure, for the town, to make sure that we get the best return we have on the tip and on this, this is a $56 million investment here, and we want to make sure it's really profitable.
So I've got a question on that tip that we were about. Is there a town liability to get project fails at some point? Is there a tip, an active liability for the town?
Town's liability and the tip is, the monies that you get back are based on setups, based on valuation, that's it. You have no liability to R.J. Grundin, no response words, and then outside of things that we ask you to do under this, you have no liability with the state, and yank this tip if it fails. We're not liable to save any. The only thing we are liable for, like this week, is that we're halfway through, any tip monies that we collect, if we capture value we collect, we have to use it for the program. So whatever programs we have going, we have five different programs that we've looked at, articulated, stayed, we have to use that money for that. So that's our only liability from that side. But that's unconnected to...
If the project failed, we don't need to return that money to the town.
Whatever monies that we get, capture values from the tip, yes, we have to use that money for the designated purpose. That's why, let's say, there's not enough money to do sewer, but we also have the economic program for a break, we have a couple of the smaller projects, we can use, get fun of the money instead, still be in our contractual obligations with the ECD, and ensure that, and it's not that we're going to return any money, what the money we get from that, the only liability is that we tack, we include it in the formulas for school funding, or county tax, or the road, or general weather. That's about the only liability, but the front of the street, I don't see that happening. We have a quick, old economic policy, so we'll spend it, make this thing happy, and ensure that, so there's no other financial liability for us as a project.
Question.
Through this, we're showing more or less right now, right with Grundin, this is basically infrastructure being prepared for future development along the way, right now.
Correct.
Okay. Setting the different areas up for phase one, phase two, and then down.
Sure, yes.
Where does your funding come through? Or how does that work when you actually are starting the building of the units?
Units.
I mean, where does, how does that, I mean, this is more or less infrastructure for what's coming on now, so that you can get ready to go to build the units.
Correct.
Okay. But where on the phasing will that come about for development?
Well, your...
I'm just asking the question.
I understand. Well, we have the funding for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. The thing is that it does not come under this group, we're building the units, building, for example, the community center, building the amenities, does not come under this.
Okay, that's, that's, that's where I was just, just inquiring...
For the infrastructure.
This is where I was inquiring how, if it was separate, different, or anything else.
Just to give you an example, phase one, 1A, 1B is one. And two, the time you threw a problem into it, the infrastructure rolled, 6 million bucks. Forget about building equipment. So that's what that's for. And by that time, let's say we had sold 50 units, 3,000, 3,500 cars has come into the town, that's 150,000. That's not a lot of money for the name. So if we've got over 6 million bucks in, plus the cost of the units, probably into it for 7, 8 million bucks, and this 150,000, and it comes later. So this is really upfront, heavy building project, so I'm working quickly to try to get it done, because it's the end, it's all of the front entrance, which there's no unit sign. It's a community center, and it is part of the septic system. It's about 1,200 million feet, plus the internal footage of the road, probably close to 2,400 million feet, but only get one unit sign. So you see those expenses, and it's all funded privately, because no, the things is, it's not, unfortunately, my partners are looking at it.
Joe, has Mr. Grundin taken out shop yet for new equipment?
No, but they're going to buy me dinner one of these days.
I figure, how many new, how many new fat clothes and...
I don't know, they got quite a bit of equipment, they're so excited that they're around.
They want to get ready to go break it, so they, you can buy them, you don't want to give me that.
No, I mean, one of the things I like about Grundin is they got backup equipment and...
I know that.
Joe, we are anxious to get going out there. This is the time of year where we really are looking for it, so we're anxious to be able to hit the ground running as quickly as we can.
We have to stop because Schizti is getting stuck in the mud.
Ah?
We have to stop work because Schizti is getting stuck in the mud.
We have to pull the ball out.
Yeah. And we have to stabilize the site.
With this, this drawdown scheme that you have, have you used this in the past?
No, this is the first time. I've done projects, private projects like this, never have to bond them, never have to put any funds up.
Have you used this kind of scenario before?
Tri-party agreements?
I mean, this drawdown, I...
The role of Grundin is a role. This is a little bit different than what we've done before, but I think the concept works, having, you know, the money positive in the account, verified by the bank, verified by the town. It gives us an awful lot of comfort. Quite honestly, I wish we could have other projects for private developers do this way.
To the chair, I have to ask a question. I can speak to another project, it's a private-public project, in fact, a very, very large project, where the phase-by-phase, pieces of phases, they basically, the applicant, their partnership has put money in an escrow, same sort of way, much smaller scale in terms of what's required between the statement, phase, these. But that money is put in escrow, it's rolled over, we go from one phase to the next, it gets rolled over, and so it stays, it's getting reused and getting tagged, but it just stays there. It's a kind of a concept. They're not paying on that account, they're using that just as their actual contingency for site stabilization and performance here.
Well, this is, in fact, a new model for all of us. So I'm just wondering if this has worked successfully, it looks like it should, but I'm just wondering if anyone comes up with it.
Well, we've used, we've used a tri-party agreement here successfully.
Well, yeah, on this scale.
I've used it, I've used it in a large area, Goograss, which is not a project, so.
A lot of...
It works, it works, but I've never done it rolling like this before, because it's always small, the small sections, little section. Not, not anybody did the infrastructure of this, because this is a very long, very big project, infrastructure kind of spread all over. As you said, you've got 1,200, 1,200 linear feet, no units on this, okay? That's very unusual, so it's very spread out for the infrastructure. And the rolling concepts, most of my tri-party, had very good success, we had regular monthly meetings, drawdown meetings, and it worked very well. Actually, we've been...
Are you comfortable with this scenario?
Yeah. A little question for you. Paul, did he receive? Yes, he was in attendance. Rick keeps giving me credit, but I wasn't going in there. Town manager, I was like, what's going on? Felt comfortable with this, because this is unusual. And quite frankly, I think this also allows Jordan to use the money, or judiciously, going out and spending that 3% on a bond for a whole project. Quite frankly, I don't want to do that, because we're going to spend money on lawyers to get that money, first of all. And second of all, it doesn't cover contingencies, it doesn't cover change orders, it doesn't cover any of that, outside of blocking the contingency. They hit you with a 20% contingency, or what, it's $7 million project. It's just more judicious, money, resources. And it also makes sure that we're a part of the project, and that's, Joe's not coming and says, oh, here, I want 31 COs right now, the road doesn't work. We're in on it the whole way. And I think it gives him a certain level of comfort, which is one more sell-on.
Yeah.
And Phil feels real comfortable, because he knows he's getting paid.
Yeah.
So it's win-win all the way around. But it's up to this board, because it is unusual, it is typical, that's why you need to sanction this approach.
Do you have any questions?
As long as the town manager, the county manager, the...
So TAD, did I hear correctly that effectively, that the phases aren't going to be as hard and fast as it would be in a typical project, right? So, yeah.
It's going to be as hard and fast because there's a certain, there's a lot of inter- It's going to be as hard and fast because there's a certain set, there's a lot of interaction.
And that was where my question was going initially, in that how would we be safeguarded, the town be safeguarded if a portion of Phase One, or say the red phase, you know, rolled into a stormwater basin into the yellow phase? You know, or sewer piping, or who knows what may interface between the different phases?
From here to here?
Yeah, and I wasn't around, keep in mind, I wasn't a part of the board when the plans were presented and approved and reviewed and all that stuff.
From here to here, so far miles.
Right.
We're not going to run this to make a finding at this time. Most likely, this is where we're working because we have to get to the septic system. We're going to the north, and most likely we'll go to the blue. And then we'll start building it.
The other thing, we do have Joe's, we do have to provide the septic system.
And in Phase Two, so if that's, we cut that road end, we gravel it, we stabilize it so that police, ambulance, fire comes through. But we're not putting in the infrastructure. We're just basically providing an access.
If I may, to get to your point, we're going to be incentivized, you know, look, we have, we see more work being done. We're going to want to make sure that we have a budget in place so that the monies are put in front so that we don't get overdone on the projects.
So in a way, that would provide the safeguard in that conventionally, they go to do the red phase and somebody does some numbers and lots of figures on what's involved in the red phase and puts that money aside, but yet there's some drainage that goes in down into the, I guess, really the white phase of the project that wouldn't be captured. So this way, with Brunden and where the current involvement, we've got two sets of eyes that are really looking at those extras that could be left off in a conventional, we need to do it this way.
On a monthly basis.
Yeah.
To your point, let's say that we want to get that second means of the transfer emergencies. Let's say along the way, they've got to put in drainage structures. It's going to be in their budget, it's going to be presented in these folks. And it's going to be a line item that says, we're going from station this to station there to meet the safety guidelines, and these are the pieces. This is what we're going to be doing. Then the money is budgeted, again, goes through TAD, account engineer, the RIT, and then you look at it. Maybe you've done not all at once, maybe in three, four months. But then with the requisition, yes, they can look at it. After this station, just the work done, given this drainage systems could be put in, how they put in, clear up, then the money is going to be paid. If this is not complete, they won't get paid.
So just so I'm clear, every thirty days, you'll meet with Brunden and the bank and the town and do a drawdown. And then at day sixty, you'll do that. At day seventy-five, there will be the time where you go to the bank with additional funds to replenish the account.
The next ninety days.
Correct.
Right.
Actually, it seems like better while the pay is paid. Because you know, for Joe, you can much more easily see it ninety days on the road rather than you have to two years.
You're not catalyzing all that, buying up all that additional capital.
Especially in a situation where we have to get that second means of the units of the earth. We'd have to bond white and yellow.
Yeah. And our orange.
That's white, yellow. Just to get the same, just to get the red. And so that's a huge amount of infrastructure. But they tied up capital, and we're only trying to just build on the second means of the earth. So it gives a lot of flexibility.
Yeah. One good question now. Okay, we're putting this phase agreement in place, okay? Been out there playing already, okay?
Yes.
And what do we have in place now so that...
Two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
For the ninety days that we've given a copy to TAD.
Yeah.
He has that, it'll work. Now, next week, it's going to be Phase One B, which is about four hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, but I was just wondering.
No, because we've got two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in the bank.
In the bank right now.
In the bank.
I just gave a document.
Because last year and this year.
I haven't.
Because last year and this year, okay? Because I know there was a period of time in between there where we were talking about, okay, of having stuff in place before you could start blasting or anything else.
It wasn't there.
I am just...
No, it wasn't.
I mean, so you're getting prepared for blasting?
I would say yes.
I mean, I'm just asking in general, Joe, I'm not...
No, I understand. I know I was pushing the fill because they brought back the equipment yesterday.
I believe so, yeah. I don't know if we're going to be touching things off Monday morning, but...
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying in general.
It's coming, it's coming. Phase one A, yeah. Yeah, that's when we'll be able to really start making products.
That way you get some material to turn around and stabilize the ground.
Actually, they've already seen this road right here. They've already started working on this interior road. They've been bringing in material along because that's where the malls are going. So I kind of asked them, please concentrate on those mall areas. So they started working. As a matter of fact, they got compacters out there.
I don't get up that way that often.
So that started.
I'm stuck in my hole.
That started, yeah.
Is that quarter mile from the shop?
Lunchtime, lunchtime, go for a walk, yeah.
What was your point there?
I was looking at the diagram.
So actually, I have to take a... Who this methodology?
I'll take a motion to approve this methodology of...
Roll over payback.
I didn't say roll over payback.
Rolling payback.
Well, second act.
Yeah.
I mean, what discussion are you...
I don't know. Okay. All right. You're both all in favor? You know, both? Thank you, good.
Thank you, Jack.
I have one other question, Mr. Chairman, if I could. And it's something we need to discuss because there are, as you know, as we proceed together to put in the site plans that we're going to be bringing to the boards to look at. Community center, your question.
We have to back some of them.
So the question is, what level does the board want to deal with changes? Deal changes, and what level does one staff want to do? Case in point, you look at the Rick's drawing, you see this, Joe. It's actually a lot more detail than what's required. These change has been...
That's the point. That's the, this one, you know, the only thing that's changed is that right there. I guess it's exactly the same.
So there's going to be some changes that they make. Now, you're going to bring in the community center.
As a site plan review.
As a site plan review, right. But if they change the location of what we call a sales office, is that something you want to do? Or is that something that you want staff?
I think that's out of site review. Because the fact is, we can't go out there physically by people and make a decision because this is site improvement, site changes really help.
I should just...
Well, I suppose anyway, just making a staff decision, but then notify the board that that's it. If things seem to be getting, you know, out of hand, the board will say, it's obviously, just to keep the project rolling, I think it should be staffed.
Because they'll be making some landscape changes, some design, some weight changes, basically for study purposes, some landscaping decisions out. I'm not worried about the landscape as much. Let's get it built first before, right? I want to make sure that if staff does that, that's all right.
And on the other side of the coin, I think, Joe, as a developer, you know that if you work with staff and you can't come to a good agreement, hold it out the option, you can't report and ask the board to consider it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One question, Joe. I see down here it says Kenny Bumpford sees your cottage. And there's a, and it says a rundle there, but it doesn't say a rundle down here.
Well, Mr. Brunden now knows it's a rundle Kenny Bumpford Cottage.
Okay, I've just, I've got the note.
Yeah.
It's coming out of his first position.
By the way, the website is going up, guys, it's live. You know what, that's not, that's not, that was me. I drew this up.
You?
It was me.
Yeah. Hi, Phil.
You. Good stuff. Vista. Vista. Enjoy it.
It is up. Has it been given to the town yet?
It will be tomorrow because we put it up this morning. Also, we've got two ads going up. One is in Yankee Magazine, and the other one is in the Kenny Bump, Kenny Bumpford Rundle Chamber of Commerce. It's after becoming over there. Chambers.
Are they going to run for the new place down the road cottage?
Yeah, there's no competition.
There's no competition. That one's a little...
Yeah, I think, I don't think. As a matter of fact, I look forward to bring, they'll bring people to us. That's how I look at it.
A theater.
It's a theater, yes.
Well, congratulations on all the work you've done.
Thank you. Thank you for the partnership.
Thank you for your support, really. Yeah, it is a partnership, so thanks a lot.
Great.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah. Three grandkids, three grandkids.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next.
All right, so we will move on to proposed ordinance changes.
This is one eleven?
This is a chairman, what time are we playing here?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Yeah, it's that.
Okay.
I mean, it's something well-known ahead of time.
Good, thanks for asking that.
It sounds good. I think I got back one week ago.
I want to get this to the board.
Night.
Good night, thank you. Happy New Year.
So I have a question, where you pass this out? This is formerly known as the North Community.
Yeah, the Community. Oh, just change it again, it's not the same.
Same place, though.
Oh, who knows?
No, it stands out to the...
We're going down the power lines now.
Down the power.
Like what we were originally supposed to have in the first place before they decided to change things all the way around.
Now, I'll be honest with you, gentlemen, I have not had a lot of time to put this together.
Why not?
Because of the vacation, I'm dealing with a lot of other things. The chairman wanted me to get it going, so...
By the way, along the way, you just kicked us out. Has all the landscaping been completed where it was supposed to be?
Which one?
Yes, so.
Landscape. I'm confused.
Eighty-five?
Uh, no, that is not the... That, that is connected to the barn now.
That's a part of the barn beforehand.
No, it wasn't, but it's part of the same project. That's the way, that's CEO will not be issued unless that landscaping is... Okay, so you passed two different districts out, which is what happened when Jim was out. Tab, which one do you want to start on? We get started, you know, I'm not kidding when I said we have not really spent a lot of time on this. What I want to do...
The town's point, you asked us to refer on the downtown business two district.
Right. The reason why I'm giving you the downtown business two district is that frankly speaking, if you start really looking at it, there's not a lot of difference between that and what you probably want to see, what conflict you want to see up on Alfred Road. If you look at Alfred Road right now, what I gave you is the Alfred Road Business District. This is really what's allowed right now in that district. Okay? This is the community north, community commercial north district. And the uses that are allowed in there. I took it right off of the chart. You can see there's a whole bunch of stuff in there.
Yeah, including pier, dark dwarf.
Yeah. It should be removed. Yeah, it should be removed. I put that in there just so you know that that's what's in there now. And what's going to happen with that, by the way, gentlemen, remember, when we do the chart method of land use listings, what we're doing is we have to include everything that's in every district, especially the shoreline zoning district. So when we get pier dwarfs and wildlife management practices and timber harvesting, lots of those, soil and water conservation practices, these are things that are in our chart. When we go to these districts, or when we go to the new format, those are going to disappear because frankly speaking, those really only pertain to shoreline zoning issue because they're got soil and water management practices. All the piece of wildlife is something that we've got a regular, yes. Nor is wildlife management something we're going to regularly. So that's only really done in the shoreline zoning. So this stuff, that, all those kind of really annoying things will drop off. But for accuracy's sake, include them in here. This is this idea, what it is. And the reason why I gave you the downtown business district is because that, as you can see, has a lot more stuff in it than this one.
But that's because that was a new process we came up with specifically.
Exactly. It was a new process, and also it was because we were looking at that downtown business district, that backland area as being more or less a more intense commercial developed zone.
But there are also some things that we didn't have on...
In China.
Sorry, that's right. Brewerys, one of them.
Right. Which don't really fit any of our current classifications. Where are you going to put brewery, manufaction? That's not really manufaction. Food preparation, yes, you could say that, but...
Cake butter, for example, agriculture. And now they couldn't do it because they have a processing.
Right. And that, that was also because of the zone too. That's a dark forest. I would call that a manufaction facility. This district, that would be a manufaction.
So, Chad, should we go through, looking at the Alfred Road Business District, go through the list and take what might apply from the DB two?
I think so. And what you folks think would be appropriate out there, in a way, obviously, is a thing.
That's almost another DB two district. I think it's another, frankly speaking.
You're not going to break into zones again?
We're going smart as a cow. And you remember, Marty, the reason why we did that is to try to avoid going to conflict. It was...
No, I'm just going to say, aren't you going to break, you said you'd break up property lines again, turn on DB one and DB two now? You had to this?
No. This particular thing, what we're going to do is we're following property lines. In fact, if you look at the, I was pulling up on the concrete, it's playing. We're going to be going with property lines of this whereas we didn't before.
What's your depth?
My depth is property one.
No.
Yeah, that's my depth.
Because, sir, what is the current depth, though?
Thousand feet. Current depth is a thousand feet. What we're going to do with that, I just want to...
We have to get the angle by the diagonal there.
Is it?
A few manuals.
Yeah. Well, there's the ARD district. As you can see, it's following properties. In most cases, it's following property lines out here. It's not following many property lines here. What we're going to try to do is keep it pretty much along these lines here. There's always the power lines, it's the entire area into, including this area, there's a weird amount of property lines.
Marty, you put the ARD up higher on that.
It's just a conflict, I mean, it's just, just for illustrative. I can do it too well.
You see the white better than the blue?
Well, this is just an illustrative map, like, just trying to show generally where it is, that's alright. Okay, so, so this is, this is pretty much the district going to the power lines and it's, it's real value, it's really to the north. And the big piece, two pieces is going south, the rest of it is all kind of along.
I will ask you please to move it so I can see it.
That work?
Thank you.
Alright, so that, that's, you'll be, uh, on the property, uh, the boundary along the property line at some point. So we don't have to get that picky right now.
We don't have to get that picky right now, but you can see where...
In the extension, we're including all of that property.
Yeah.
And here, in a, we can follow individual property lines. But this is all pretty much developed as a district.
I think a straight line like that probably works better. It's a little choppy.
Well, it might be choppy, but, you know, at the same time, I, I mean, this is what Sean Deuce's piece right here.
Yeah.
That's a big piece there. There's absolutely no reason to have a business zone, quite frankly, if you can't think, because this is all Alfred Road, he's coming up. These are all residential property here, except for Charlie. This is residential through here and to have a business district that discourages residential development in an area that clearly you would like to have probably residential development, uh, kind of doesn't make sense. Compared to this also is that they're, they're, uh, residential districts right now, conflict community, as you remember from December meeting, they're following property lines wherever they can, except down along the, the lower part of River Grove. They already had a meeting with one property, uh, on Tuesday, it's too bold to be going there now.
Where, where is that thing with, with this, and see what properties prefer?
I think that's what, we can do that, uh, right now, and we probably will, especially the ones who are here. Especially the small ones. We know that Mr. Alfred, he just changed his on the route to our one.
Where about that is, is the project that Phil Labby had? That wasn't, because that was not following property lines.
That was right there. That's the lateral property there. That's a good question to ask, Bill. We get into a problem like that property right there, quite frankly, it's going to be a tough sell for the business businesses. Subdivision for office, maybe, but it's tough land.
So, you know, you know, one of the big differences between this and DB two is that there's a lot more vendors. It's already, where along Route one, there's only two homes, so... He's got a bunch of that, so, something like, uh, so, right now, uh, DB two, we had, we're restricted to some of the residential property. I don't know if that would quite work in this district.
Well, I think what they're doing is restricting, as you remember, the residential development restriction that the conflict committee, that was the rules, to restrict residential subdivisions, not those that were family, those that were exempt from subdivision law could be permitted. And those, those exemptions would be, uh, provisions after five years and family divisions. Those are the two that are, the two big exemptions. So people who are existing lots, obviously, could put residential in there. Assuming they want to cut off these property for a child, they still could do that, you know, with unity. But assuming they want to go and find lots of it, like, go with that, not that could be wrong. Because that's what they're recommending, not occur in this particular district.
But that business instead of residential.
Yeah, and this is, this is a, that's more or less what, even though it's called a residential district, uh, excuse me, mixed use, the objective is to focus, as far as the conflict communities, to focus it more on the commercial with residential as a side. That's, that's what they do. Also, remember that they went from a fifteen thousand square foot maximum that currently exists in this district to a hundred thousand, which, wow, that sounds ominously like DB two, doesn't it?
But that was the orig, that was the original plan before the conflict plan got changed around.
Well, if that's the case, then went back to it, let's put it that way. It's large, it's allowing large, uh, larger buildings, uh, fear of expansion of them for crossing up into a rundle is, is not something that was major concern to the conflict community.
Because of current economic conditions and the over, frankly speaking, the overplaying of the law schools. I want, uh, looking at the clock here, we're running out of time, yeah. I don't know if you could, if you could wait if you all, I mean, if it's, but...
Continue this next, yeah, which is next week.
Is there any?
Sure.
Is there any, uh, discussion on the development time on the Alfred Road, as far as property measures?
No, I mean, they've got their plan to, uh, to unite, basically, to, to fix the intersection of old Alfred Road and newer that I, I haven't seen them making any, uh, new moves on that recently. We have a sketch and that we, a sign that's only at the conceptual level. Don't worry, you're a photo, so it's, it's more than you should hear.
Speak up, we can't hear you back here. I mean, it's like you guys have your own circle.
Oh, you can pull a chair right up here.
I don't know how you have it, right?
That's, that's basically...
The rest of them can.
Basically, that's, that's the... There's been no change, basically. There's been no change in the, uh, the status with DOT. They, uh, they intend to do that, that intersection change, uh, but there's no timeline on it. They haven't done any design on it. They intend also to put in the light of Hill Road. That's supposed to be in this funding cycle, this by Indian funding cycle, or is that the one? I don't know. They've done the bubble strips, as John can tell you. They've done that. Yeah, and that's about it for now.
I think the biggest challenge we're going to have with this district and what is marrying the two, it's a fairly densely developed area right there at the end of New Road and the large parcels that are in existence along the, the western case of it.
I agree.
And don't forget, we also have the western edge, I'm saying the town border line. You have two, uh, you have the trail park.
Yep.
And then you have the other, uh, you have the old dump and then you have the, uh, the other, what do you want to call it? Next to the trail park. Another subdivision of that.
Yep. And you have the Drews Mill Road area. Which is mixed use, residential and commercial.
And industrial.
The gravel pit is off of the, uh, is actually, most of it's in, but different.
Yeah.
But then, uh, we also have on the opposite side of the southern side of the road, we have pretty much open up land. Looks like a good chunk of it, but the greater potential is here. And the greater potential would be if the, for whatever reason, the trailer park falls, there's a good, good chunk of land in there that can be redeveloped for other purposes.
Now, another question I asked about infrastructure. Just throwing it up. Infrastructure today. I mean, now, yeah, we're lucky now, we got three phases down there. I mean, that's...
And that, that right at this particular time will be dependent upon EDC and the selectmen in terms of what priority infrastructure, town-sponsored infrastructure would be in. It would be probably connected to what Sydney Minifree does with one Alfred, uh, Andrews Road, okay? Because we have...
What is their game plan? Do they know?
There is no game plan right now.
Because at one time or another, there was supposed to be an arena, or there was supposed to be...
That's back and everything else.
Yep.
Right now, they have no plans for Andrews, no short-term plans for Andrews Road. Until they extend that, we will need a special project to be able to reduce something, extend it out. Whether we reinstate water down, down Alfred Road, uh, we'd be contingent probably in having a destination business to, to pay for it. The only other thing we could do would be to extend water down Alfred Road to provide relief called the saline, water conditions down in the bottom of the valley into the air. Actually, we're going to think about here, over up here, up to, up there. Well, we have saline, we're in the, we're in the seawater outfit, yes.
The other thing why I was asking...
Any way we could do that is if, if we want to provide relief to that, we can probably get a grant, but there's such a long amount of infrastructure with so few houses served that it just don't seem cost-effective. Plus, it would cost the taxpayers, we have to put in money on these things, it costs, it's the least one percent of the cost. It's a million dollars, that's what it is, that's two hundred thousand dollars in town debt.
So the reason I was asking that is of the idea of everybody else, because there's very little up there for fire protection.
Well, we do have some fire pumps, Marty. We do have, we do have some artesian wells, some clean wells, we have a lot of main gallons of water, you know. It's open surface and dry hydrant access, but it's still pretty good. And as you recall, we can put in that special system over cakes. So if we've got one here, or if we've got one here, and fill it with this project, we have third of this, we have a lot of water supply. But it's raw water, so I mean, we have to move with tankers and water rebasing. So it's not that bad. Plus, we also have a hydrant over here. It's a big shop, it's a downhill run.
How close is it to the power line?
About...
Is that, is that Andrews? That hydrant, I believe they got one at the top of the hill, and you come up from the Minifree Cross.
Yeah.
I think that's the part, that was the big issue with the church move, with water coming up that road.
Yep. But it's not on our side of the water, seriously. I think it stops just before you. So, I mean, we do have water supply and we do have the sewer, so there's always going to be an issue. But right now, we don't have a user that can really use that sewer. Maybe we could, in the future, zone more land to be able to, uh, take advantage of some open lands that we didn't have before. It's all on demand. Like, you're right, marrying the open, we're open lands here with a very tight urban residential, small lot situation here is going to be a real interesting juxtaposition of two different types of uses in the same order. And I think we're going to basically do it based on largest possible, and the way the conflict committee did it, they were looking at it, saying, well, let's, let's shoot for the moon, put in, build big buildings in there. Obviously, you're not going to be voiding a hundred thousand square foot building, but we do have, that's, that's a chunk of land. I do, we do have some other people that are looking at other pieces of land in there, not to do large projects, but to put in some, some businesses. So it's not like it's a dead zone.
Well, it is a nice mix of commercial and residential, especially right up along, what, like, you know, you got the electrician plates and the, the car repair, uh, sorry, Marty.
I'm sorry. No, there's a lot. It's a little harder to move for residential properties, to be honest with you. I mean, there's two residential properties that have been on the market all, I would say about eight months, and I've moved them. So it's a couple of residential properties. Conversion to businesses, like, there's potential, but we'll see. Uh, so we have, we should probably go through these lists. And, uh, the chairman has called a meeting for next Thursday, so... Could be one of the things on the agenda, that would be the agenda, I think, if you want success to get business. This will be our, our last, uh, fresh, yeah, this will be our last commercial district. And then we can move into the permanent statements. And meanwhile, the, the conflict committee, uh, is, as you know, they're starting to work on the, they've already pretty much summed up R one, two, and three. We won't have to have that done in time for town, because they're looking to take that to town meeting. Quite frankly, right now, they're working on R four, and that's going to be a very interesting, uh, very interesting process. They have, I believe they're meeting last, uh, Tuesday. So, the postal, Wichita Hall, I guess, I don't know, this won't be called a business. Pick it up on next Thursday, okay?
So Chad, that means we'll be moving on to planners report.
Uh, planners report, we have, um, I have one project that might be coming in, I don't know yet, I haven't heard back from them. So we might have a new business project coming in.
What part is that?
Huh?
What part is that?
Right now, they, right now, they're doing inspiration on Route one, Route one. So, I also have talked to the folks at AIM, they've completed their DEP permit. They're ready to submit it, so then they, uh, they will then be able to submit their application to us. Because as you remember, the issue was they had to, uh, submit the, uh, DEP permit application to us as part of their application. I have not seen a plan from them, so I don't know what the rating, what it looks like. It's my understanding they had some problems with the rating. Why, we haven't seen it yet, but it's supposed to come something to you next week. So that may be probably on the agenda for the second month, or the, the second year, the second year of the month, or the third of the month. I also have had, gotten a request, uh, to, uh, look at signage event in the DB one district. There's been a lot of question about digital signing. John, you remember that, that whole discussion? So, uh, the chairman has agreed to put that issue up on the agenda for the twenty-third, and then bringing in some, uh, some experts to talk about digital signing. And right now, our signage, our, our only kind of interior light signing that we have, as you all know, is the rest of two, which is, I don't think you can get. That is, that's what our ordinance currently allows. We have to address this issue, and it's part of the DB one or DB two, or even if nothing passes, the signage, the whole signage works, we have to do a digital signing, because it's not going to work. And it's now gotten to the point where no longer you're looking at those big pictures, we're looking at the TV screens.
So, would that need to be a separate item?
It could be, or unless it's integrated into...
These districts, that's a...
Could be integrated in these districts as well.
But that's a passing though.
Could be a tough issue. It could be, no, I don't see that conflict, so I see this, it means, uh, we have to pass. But I think that, besides, we, we should fix that, but, um, if it's, if it's packaged within everything else, it might fail. Well, they're not going to do two things at the same time, it's like, what are you presenting to the president at the same time? They have to take the chair. It's like, what if the president had to say to him, you may have to take a chance? Well, you can't have a one, you can't have one word which assumes it's going to fail on the DB1 and 2, or the ARD, and then have the backup of the old format with them in there. I don't think that was worth it for the public. Oh, great. I'll do that if you draw it down.
Southern Mae Marine.
Yeah, he's playing there.
Moving along.
Moving along.
Oh, it's him.
Moving along. I have that deal with buildings. I have a building that I saw a while ago, he's going to the gym down there. Their site stuff is going to be on. In fact, they've got a drug on request. So they have to report on it, but they haven't come along. Who else? That's about it. That's all I've got going on. Cane's Butter, you asked that question, we answered that.
Well, the rest of them didn't hear it.
Yeah, Cane's Butter, folks noticed it. The barn's not up yet, is it? Neither. I think you know about those issues.
Well, that was it.
Well, Cane's Butter, the problem with that, the barn was that there was the foundation was poor. I think I did tell you folks about the foundation problem. That was poor and didn't have the rebar. And that whole issue of the rebar has been settled, the whole issue of the regrading of the site, not going to regrade the site, it's going to stick up a little bit more in terms of validation, but they're not going to change the grade, because as you folks know, if they change the grading here, that will change the sort of more runoff, which will change, you know, the velocity going down and some of these structures they have. So now they go back to the state, they come back to us, and say, we're just keeping it, we're going to cut the foundation in order to make that grade to get in inside, because it's three foot difference. So right now, I believe they're still waiting for engineering, Jim's still waiting for engineering of the structure, that's why I'm definitely happy. In terms of the landscaping, landscaping for the barn and for the site up there must be done before ACO is issued. Wasn't the last time, as you recall, because Jim was out, the HCHCO, we do not know about that at the moment. So that's why ACO is issued, we got that. Since they all are part, it's still part of the St. Injigo project, Patriots have agreed to make sure that landscaping is in before CO is issued. We'll take care of that. Other issues? We have a number of, we're meeting with SLAC to deal with several enforcement issues we have to address and deal with that one. Otherwise, that's my report.
Motion to the chair? Want a favor?
Great.
Good luck there, Marty.